Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business that I would like to ask that we take a moment of silence for Alex with Vicki. His wake was tonight, his funeral is tomorrow. He's a student here, he graduated last year. And I just would like to take a moment to remember. Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. You need a motion?
So move.
Need a second?
Second.
Any changes? All those in favor? Yes. Next is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from October 7th. You need a motion?
Motion. So move, excuse me.
Second? Okay. Any changes? I had one. That the minutes reflect, and I think it was stated this way, but it's incorrect, that both Ruth Kelly and Kelly Flanagan are high school seniors. And Ruth Kelly is actually a junior and Kelly is a senior.
I didn't know.
So that is in item D. There were a couple other changes. My name was spelled with a space and Meg sent those out and emailed today. So those corrected minutes-
Tiny ones, yeah, and I have those corrections here.
Are here. So does anyone have anything else in terms of changes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Yes. Communications. Do you have any communications, Paul?
The Middletown Agricultural?
Yes.
The request for representatives to their committee. So the question is whether or not we're replacing these two people.
It's very unclear in the letter.
Which I didn't know and I thought maybe Chris you might be able to help us.
I didn't understand that either.
No recollection of who-
I believe this is the first time we've ever heard from them in my tenure on the Board of Ed.
Really?
I don't even know who Paul and Eric are, but they're all done apparently.
So does anyone come to mind?
Well, the concern is it says they have to have not recognized for their knowledge of agriculture-related occupations and education. So...I don't know.
I don't know either. They have their first meeting on November 12th.
Would you like me to call?
If you could call and find out what the status is with Paul and Eric?
Yeah.
And then what the criteria is. And we have, our next meeting is when? November?
I don't know.
It's not the first.
Because we don't have the first week, right?
Correct.
The third.
I believe that, yeah, I believe that actually it's the 18th. So it's after their meeting. So we're not going to have anyone for them on November 12th.
If Paul and Eric aren't still involved.
Exactly.
So let me find out some information.
Okay. All right. Great. Any other communications? No, right?
I do have one, but it's going to come under the policies.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. That would lead us to Audience of Citizens. Does anyone here would like to address the Board? All right. Board of Education, Student, Kelly, you're up.
Okay. We don't really have any immediate things, other than tonight is the girls' soccer senior night and tomorrow is the boys' senior night, so big day for them. We have some more information on my class's senior trip, which is taking place at the end of April, after the April break. And the first payment is due November 3rd. And provided that we meet our quota of 68 students, it should be all set and ready to go. And other than that, just that we've got the blog up and running. So it's geared more towards parents if they don't want to use social media. So you can find that on the school website as well.
Can I add something to the student report? Well, just because if Ruthie was here, she might have mentioned that the class of 2016 is having that Zumba-thon or Zumba fundraiser Thursday evening. So if any of you gentlemen on the Board would like to come out and Zumba.
Thanks for the invite.
Forgive me if I don't make it.
Well, if you know anybody, but it's a fundraiser for the junior/senior prom for the-
Yes.
But the class of 2016 is putting it on, is that correct, Kelly?
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else? Any other questions for? I know that there was talk of a dance, but there's not going to be a dance on Halloween, correct?
No, as far as I know, we've x'd all dances until the ball, which takes place in December.
In December, okay.
There is a Halloween event at Valley View, though, isn't there?
You're going to ask-
It's an annual thing.
You have to ask his wife.
Ask my wife. Going to try to make it.
All right. On to, we're going to bid you goodnight. Go do your homework, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, and move on to the superintendent's report.
So I told you I would give you a quick update on my entry plan activities. So I'm up to 40 meetings with either individuals or small groups of teachers, grade levels of teachers or subject area teachers. They have been providing me a wealth of information, not to mention the connections that come from that and my understanding and knowledge of the people behind the scenes, if you will, the people doing the work here in each of our schools. So I'm looking at the end now of that. Although, one of the takeaways of this is that I'm hearing is that it can't stop. So in other words, being, having the opportunity to sit down with staff members on a regular basis is necessary. And that's what I'm hearing. So we will continue it, perhaps not as often as I'm doing right now. But, so I'm going to try to wind these down as we head into November so that I can give a draft validation report to the staff, sort of my common findings, to make sure that's exactly what I heard. And then with Lieutenant bringing back the file report to you.
Great.
In the first of the year, when we head into budget. So the other thing that I've been working on, today I've uploaded, I finally posted my website, which is connected to our main page, which also includes a blog. And so I'll be working on that and trying to use that as a tool for communication with the greater community, as well as my Twitter account and trying to get people, again, using some of these opportunities to reach out to me and to know about what we're doing here in the district. The third thing that I've been doing as part of these, part of my entry plan is going to events. I was delighted to be at the Shoreline Music Festival last Thursday. Truly an amazing event, 200 musicians, very talented instrumental players and singers. The concert was just, was just tremendous. Just outstanding. And went to a sporting event, went to the boys' and girls' soccer game that was here last week. So again, those are all parts of that plan that you looked at earlier and so we're still trying to get out there and meet and greet. So that's, that's the update for my plan. I wanted to share with you a communication I had with Ben Mustaro from CAE. I'm extremely pleased that the Portland Public Schools has decided to engage CAE in doing an audit of the Board's existing policy manual. In this process, I will analyze the district's existing manual and prepare a narrative report on the strengths and weaknesses of the manual. The audit will include the review of all existing policies, bylaws, and administrative regulations. Also provided will be a chart indicating for each policy in the existing manual, whether it requires modification, revision, or existing language is fine, either updating or additional legal references. In addition, my report will indicate where the manual lacks mandated policies required by federal or state law and also good practice policies as recommended by CAE. As you're aware, the cost of the service will be $1,800. And the only bad thing is that he will not start this audit until February, we're on the list. But he hopes that the audit will be completed by March with recommendations and then his attendance here at a Board meeting to answer your questions. I'm to send him an existing hard copy of the policy manual now, just in case he can start sooner than-
And the timing of that, while I'm anxious to get this started, we're going to be very focused on budget all through January.
Right.
And so, you know, it'd be ideal if he finishes it early and we get it in February. Then we can start looking at it, but-
So I did talk to him about an option to get his feedback. I said, you know, depending on your desire to get this subcommittee moving, there are, there are two or three different options. We have a couple of policies in the chute, if you will. Policies that, there's one regarding substitute teaching policies. It's quite outdated and needs some Board consideration in terms of payments and how we address the substitute issue, which is a challenge. The administrative team has told me this is a challenge in this district to get qualified subs. So I thought the best way to address it first is getting this policy clear.
Yep.
And the Board behind it, and then us moving forward. So we could take, there's a couple of those in the chute, if you will, and take those until the audit is complete. We have bylaws, which are what guide this Board of Education, that really don't need CAE's legal recommendations or their input as much. And then we can take a look at them after we've redone them, so we can redo the bylaws. And then the third thing is we have a couple of update service policies that came, which you do subscribe to this, and we can, we can start on some of those as well. So if you do want to get this policy subcommittee, I'm ready to go and can get it moving in November.
Thoughts?
Well, I'd just say I know that the bylaws have needed attention and updating for some time. As you mentioned, we don't necessarily need to wait on CAE's review of those, of that element. And then there are, as you mentioned, I think it makes sense to look at those and the ones, as you put it, that are in the chute, like the substitutes policy.
I would agree. I think that if we have the time and you, we have some things, I mean, if we were sort of grasping at straws to just make something up, but if we have some things that we could work on, I don't see why we wouldn't begin.
Yep, makes sense.
I think I'm the chairman of the subcommittee.
I think you are. I can completely remember.
Who are the other members?
I don't know. Who's on there?
I think I'm on it.
Yeah, I think you and Ron.
Chris, Ron. Oh, good. So are you guys?
Absolutely.
So, so what I'm hearing and what I agree with is that the policies that are in desperate need of attention, that we already know of being the substitute.
That's, that's the one that's right there on my desk, ready to come to you.
And the bylaws?
And then the bylaws.
Are something the Board is saying is higher priority right now and could be done comfortably prior to the audit. So I say schedule a policy meeting for prior to the Board of Ed meeting on the 18th.
Okay.
And so six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Sure.
Gives you an hour.
Yep.
Anyone obviously is welcome to attend the fun of the policy meeting. It's just the actual members are the ones who-
Julie, you'll have, that's in the minute, six o'clock on that. What is it, did you say the 18th of November?
Great.
All right.
All right. The next piece is the CAE's CAPS convention, wanting to know whether or not this Board or any of its members would be interested in attending this.
One, maybe as a little bit of background to this, one of the things that Philip and I talked about is that there are a few items on there that both of us thought would be interesting, but perhaps not worth, I don't want to say worth, perhaps not a prudent use of time right now in that Dr. O'Reilly has so many other things going on, that perhaps if we were to look at that list and pick a few items or an item that we thought was particularly important and invite CAE to come to us for a presentation during one of our meetings, that might allow the entire Board to experience the information. And it would be, I don't know how much it would be cost-wise, but it certainly couldn't exceed, I would think, what it would cost to send all seven of us to the conference. So...and, and we don't necessarily need to decide on what those items would be. What we need to decide tonight, because beyond Friday, the cost of going to the conference increases. So if there is somebody or some people who would like to attend, we do need to decide that today. So is there anyone?
So, I'm sorry, Marion, so you're saying you did identify or you didn't identify?
I did. Like I thought, I thought that there were a couple that- We good?
Yes.
Okay. I did identify that there were a couple of things. Philip was saying this school and public safety was one that was interesting. Negotiations was something that stuck out to me. Board roles and responsibilities, which is something we did have CAE come and talk to us about already. So there, there are lots of things. The capstone project was another thing. So there's lots of choices here and we can think about that. But, and that, that was just Friday. You know, I didn't get too much further into what Saturday would hold.
Well, I guess my thought about it, I have attended in the past, twice. I know a lot of people are new to the Board, so I would imagine most people haven't attended. I know Chris has attended.
Yeah, I think he's attended.
I have not.
Never, okay.
No, I have not.
And I could go either way with it. I, there was value in it when I attended, but then, you know, Portland appears and it's really, the time I went, I was myself one year. And then I think one year, Chris, we might have crossed on, on one day. So some of it is helpful. I'm just not sure. I wasn't planning to. But I mean, if the Board of Education wanted there to be a representative to attend, I would, I would do it. I would, I would be willing to go, but if we're just saying-
And I would be willing to go if the Board members- There are a couple of things that look interesting to me if I make this transition.
Because I know people, it affects, and just like me, I mean, I have to take the day off of my regular job to attend. And I've done that twice. I have done that. And so I am, I am willing to do that. But I just didn't know just one representative in order. And that you would want me to attend, you know, specific or somebody. And there are new people. To me, I sort of think if anybody that's new to the Board could attend, it's sort of a good experience for that person. It's hard with work, I understand. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at it. I think there's some topics I'd be interested in, but yeah, it would be- I don't mind doing it. I think it'd be really interesting, but then I have to get a sub.
I know, I know, especially in your, I know.
So-
But I've just, I mean, I like the idea of having some specific topics, maybe?
Coming here.
And maybe at a later date. I'd really like to attend and I'd, you know, I'd want to go with somebody else. I don't like going to those things with the lone representative.
I know. I didn't like that either.
Yeah. But just, I mean, off the top of my head, I would say negotiations is probably a big one.
Chris?
Yeah, well, I, just kind of somewhat echoing what Andrew said. I mean, I've attended one or two CAE conferences and, you know, I think they're very valuable. As a Board member, it's a good opportunity to interact with Board members from around the state. And looking at the agenda, the, this year's agenda seems a little bit more substantive, maybe similar. In all honesty. I think the main reason I haven't attended more than the one or two that I have has been, you know, I think we talk about it every, every year, those of us who've been on the Board a few years, CAE does charge quite a bit of money for attendance.
I know.
So in the past, when we have had members go, it's typically been, we've had maybe two people go from the Board, rather than the whole Board go. I was actually considering going this year and just paying my own way, but then I said, no.
Well, I, I sort of feel like, like I said, if we can bring someone in to talk about a topic that we're to be interested in, then we all benefit as a Board. And as opposed to one, one person or two people going and having to, you know, recommunicate that in a meaningful way, which can be challenged. So, and I also know that there's a lot of time out of our schedules already that takes away for, I know- That I, I take off an awful lot of time to do Board work from, from my job already. And I know each of us do in our own way. So I think what I'm hearing is that we would opt for someone coming in from CAE.
Why don't we talk to Nick Brode?
Yep.
Come on.
Sounds fantastic.
And see if he has a topic that, you know, that ties in with the goals that we've established.
Sounds good. Calendar.
Oh, no.
Right.
Yikes. So I've provided you with two beginning documents, early in the calendar process. We are required in the, we are, there is legislation that has been passed and then I think amended a little bit to create some consistencies between calendars and Boards of Education for the purpose of establishing common professional development to encourage some more regionalized efforts. My personal- My personal opinion is that we do look for more regionalized efforts and make sense for neighboring districts. And we will continue to look forward to those opportunities. But having said that, so there's this requirement that we follow some similar calendars to increase the amount of regionalized efforts that districts will make. So you have a couple of options. You have a couple of calendars there that are proposed. They reflect the understandings of the new legislation with regard to vacation days, with regard to common, common vacations. And when I say common, I mean with other districts in the shoreline region. All right? Or part of the LEARN group, if you will. So the LEARN superintendents met a couple Fridays ago. There were some guidelines and then I brought them back and created these calendars. Though there's one or two differences that have the Philip O'Reilly stamp that really needs your consideration and whether or not this is something that you would like to do. One is November. And that is, I am not a, in favor of half-days. I try to reduce the amount of half-days in our district, for obvious reasons. We want full school days. And so I would prefer to have no school rather than a half-day. And then when it can add a benefit, it's even better. And that's why this day before Thanksgiving, which is typically a half-day of school, I'm recommending that we don't, we have the day as a, as a no-school day. It doesn't impact us in a negative way at the other end. And it provides, you know, this day before Thanksgiving, which is often a heavy travel day for families and a less-than-stellar enrollment on the day before Thanksgiving. So, and I've done this in previous district, in my previous district, and it was well-received by both parents and staff. So that's why I want your debate on that. And then I think very much most of it is, is very similar to not front-loading the professional, all the professional development days, spreading them out a little bit.
And, and that's something actually that, that I wanted to talk about with the Board. One of the things that happened by accident due to the huge storm that occurred here was that we found ourselves with power in certain parts of the town and not power in others. And so we opened up the schools for professional development the week before Labor Day and had teachers report. And then we started the kids after Labor Day. And the teachers' feedback to us and the administrators at that point was how beneficial that was to have that week of professional development prior to the students coming, as opposed to more days at the end of the year or days throughout the year.
It was a little bit different in my listen and learn session.
And, and so-
I think that was good for that particular year.
Right. And so, so that's what I'm interested, has that changed? Because I, I see that it's definitely spread out. One of the other pieces that we also heard was that the, the professional development days sprinkled throughout the year can sometimes be a childcare challenge for parents.
Right.
And, and just knowing that they weren't going to start, knowing that you had that extra week of time. You, I've heard both. I've heard parents say, I have no, you know, no childcare that week before and I can't take another week off at the end of the summer. And I've heard them say, now I've got to scramble because I forgot there's a professional development day and find childcare.
Right.
And so-
From my understanding, because I attended the correct meeting about this school calendar, was that some of these professional development days are not negotiable. They are, they are part-
The two in the calendar are the shoreline agreements.
Right. So we wouldn't be able to front-load, even if we wanted to. Like the election day, which we have never had off, is we are forced to, well, I use the word for it, but we will have to do that. Right?
Well, again, you're, that's, that's what the statute says, that, that each region-
Right.
Each regional service center will offer the calendar and have these guidelines. And so our, our calendar meets that. And that's why those two days are, the two days they are, because the regional superintendents have agreed to that, so.
Right.
So, so I've heard it mixed about those early days. But I also, I also witnessed them and I thought four was long. I thought four this year was long. And for that particular purpose that year, I think it worked and where they were. Donna and I, as we unroll this professional development plan, will use those days in a meaningful way and they will serve a purpose being in the middle of the year.
Oh, no doubt.
We won't make it up.
Right, no doubt, no doubt. And I don't think that that was ever the thought, that they weren't meaningful throughout the year. I think that, again, and I totally understand what you're saying, that, that at that particular time, that was a beneficial-
Yeah.
It allowed us to get a lot of work done around teacher evaluation and safety, school safety, I think were the two areas that, and what? Common Core, thank you, yes. Yeah. So, so, you know, other, other comments about the calendar?
I have another one, but if somebody else wants to.
Well, just about the November days, I guess, I hear what you're saying about that day. But I thought, yeah, and I personally don't love half-days either, but I thought that what about the parent comp, how does that affect the teacher conferences? I thought that was the reason for the half-a-days.
No, we never had conferences.
We don't have them in November?
No, we do. It's Monday and Tuesday are conferences. They are half-day conferences.
But he's-
Just Wednesday is a half-day.
Just Wednesday.
I mean, it's a no-day.
Okay, so you're still saying leave the half-a-day? I thought you wanted to take away the half-days altogether.
Well, I can't with the parent conferences unless we change the parent conferences.
Then I misunderstood, yeah. I thought they were in there, I thought it was just an option.
What is within my control is to say that Thanksgiving Day is, is not a school day because it's a half-day. And I'd rather have a, get a full day out of there than a, than a half-day that's not well-attended.
Yeah, I just personally don't like the month of November at all. I think they're out way too much. I just can't even, now we have to take Election Day, which we never had to take.
And they're out the same number of days in April. It's, it's really-
It's, I mean, and it's broken up in November, though, that it's like, go to school, have a day off.
No, I, I agree with you. I think it's incredibly disruptive.
But I don't know how you avoid that.
I don't know.
Well, the other, one option of avoiding it, but it tends to be a controversial one.
Yeah, don't say better instead, because that's not going to happen here in Portland. Now we've, yeah, we heard, we talked that through.
We talked it through and it was not received well.
It was vetted.
It was vetted. Okay, so, so this is a, Chris, did you have something? I'm sorry, you started to say something.
I would just, what's our total number of students?
Uh, just, what's our total number of student days?
One eighty-one.
For this?
Yeah.
And then how many?
One eighty-six total for staff.
And, I mean, I guess I just would like to hear, I, like, I think that's an interesting idea to eliminate that half-day before Thanksgiving and make it into the vacation day. That probably heads off a lot of conflicts, I would think. What is your thinking about the one on December twenty-third? A lot of districts have that as a half-day as well.
Again, I'd rather, don't call me Scrooge, but I'd rather have a full day of school.
We have had a full day of school on the twenty-third when it's.
Either don't have school that day and just tack it on, because I'm, I'm not saying that we don't all like to have the twenty-third off. But I, again, it's that, why have a half-day when you can have a full day with.
And we're okay as far as.
Changing the schedule.
Instructional hours.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, we are okay.
This is only the first reading. If you remember, this is on the agenda from now until eternity because we, no, it doesn't have to be. And it sounds like, it sounds like some of our original discussions and decisions have been removed from us by the state or district calendaring. So.
But we did try to merge. Meg and I did try to take into consideration your former calendars, those recommendations, and then a few little new tweaks, so.
Yeah, if I could briefly.
Yes.
Just one thing that, yeah, I actually like, if it wasn't the first read, if it wasn't the first reading, I'd be happy to approve this calendar as it is today. But I think one thing we haven't mentioned here is, one of the reasons I like it is that the last day of school is June eighth.
Scheduled.
We're not going too, too late.
Yeah, and we've always.
Quite frankly, this, this structure gives that ability to.
Yeah.
Get us out a little bit earlier in June. And typically, we have been scheduled.
Yes. All right, so is there any other comments?
The fifteen, sixteen, or the sixteen, seventeen calendar is basically the same template on a new year.
Right. So I, I think that, are people, are people ready to have this go on as an action item for our November meeting? Or do we want more time and more discussion around it, more thinking, more hearing from other people? What's our sense?
We put on as an action item.
Action item? Action item? Okay. So then that goes on as an action item for November eighteenth to, and we can certainly have more discussion and make other changes if we're not ready to accept it, but we'll put it on as an action item.
Can you just tell me that, what are the two common professional development days? One, is it February and?
It's March.
Oh, it's the March one. I don't know where that March one came from. That seems new to me.
That, it is new. That's the March one and the, the election day one are the two recommendations from the.
And they never.
Well, I knew that, I knew that the election day one was, but I didn't think the March one was. I thought the February sixteenth was from the.
They may have changed. They may have changed.
I just don't remember that March.
Correct. See, I'm not, I didn't do this with correct. I did it with the shoreline group.
Okay.
I think March was always off limits because of CMTs and we don't have CMTs.
It'd be at the end of March.
Yeah. Yeah. The last, like, the last, very last, yeah. So instead, we have Good Friday.
Well, we typically in this district started students after Labor Day?
Not the, this year we did, and in the past, but there was a bunch of years we did not.
Okay.
So this is a change back to what we were doing.
What more are doing?
Up until, the hurricane was the first year that we did after Labor Day, that I recall.
Okay.
And then it continued because people were positive about that, but it, you know, again, that, one of the goals that the board had talked about was consistency with our calendaring. And, and one of the other things that is represented here is providing two years of calendaring as opposed to just one, so that people can really plan, families can plan trips and so forth. So again, I think that as we communicate this out to the public, we do need to talk about the common calendaring as being one of the driving forces for some changes within our calendar, because there will be some people who'll be very happy and there'll be some people who'll be very upset about the changes. So I just think we need to be prepared to speak to that after we confirm that in an action.
So my office will have, after, if you do approve this, my office will have a, some manner in which we'll share with parents.
Share and communicate the changes and why.
And make sure it's on our website and it'll be part of my, my weekly letter to them.
Great. Updates, business manager updates?
So Laura is not here. The only thing I do want to say to you is that I was contacted by Tom, our finance person, Director of Finance, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to request from me whether or not I would consent to contributing half of the money toward the championship rings for our champion baseball team. And I, and I accepted and said that we would contribute twenty-one hundred dollars with the recommendation from the business manager as to where that would come from. And she has identified a line. I don't know the line right now, but she has said that we have money to cover that. And so in a act of unity with the Board of Selectmen and in celebration of a great achievement, what people keep talking to me about, a great achievement. So I just wanted to let this board know that I made that decision. All right? That's it.
That's it. Any questions for the superintendent's report? Any questions or comments, feedback for Dr. O'Reilly? All right. We need to move on to our action items. The first action item is the Board of Education Goals for two thousand fourteen, fifteen. This is the second time we've looked at these. And so I'm assuming people read these over. It's always my assumption. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend to the full board to approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Board of Education Goals as presented tonight.
I need a second? Oh, Rob then? Okay. Any comments, questions, discussion? Pretty straightforward. I think it reflects accurately what we discussed.
And obviously, we can amend these at any time if Athens correct, if we feel.
Or take away.
Yeah. You're right.
You're right.
Goals are always up for discussion.
Right. The difference is, though, that, right, we have these objectives, the more measurable, right, was what was added into them. We agreed in those categories, but what specifically would be.
The, the actual outcome.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
That's great. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. The next thing we have are Gildersleeve grant applications. So those were also included in your packet. I'm assuming people had a chance to take a look at those. If I could have a motion first? Somebody besides Agia?
Okay.
Thank you.
I move to recommend to the full board to approve the following Gildersleeve grant applications as presented tonight. Naples and Folktale Celebration, Gildersleeve School, author Lynn Cherry, School Visit, Gildersleeve School, School Musical, Gildersleeve School. Second.
All right. And any discussion around this?
Well, two things. When is the, will you be presenting these, Dr. O'Reilly, to the, to the other?
I don't know when their next meeting is, but I did sit down with Howard and have a meeting with him about the process. So I'm familiar with the process. I have spoken with the administrators and that's where this, so this is the first. It doesn't mean it's the only one. There are other ones pending.
Yeah. Oh, that was going to be my comment.
This is not a complete list.
It isn't, because typically, in my memory, right, we always did it at the begin, two times a year, right?
Right.
By now, by, actually, this seems even a little bit late. So I thought there was sort of a, of a deadline. So the good thing is that Gildersleeve School, that's great for them, but we're, there's nothing from anyone else?
Right, right. So at this point, no.
Right.
But I know there are some in the board. I've heard people talking about them. So you can table this until we get a complete list?
Well, no, no, I'm fine with moving on. If Gildersleeve got there.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think the nice thing has been that the Gildersleeve Grant Fund has always been very accommodating to late submissions or last-minute submissions, which we don't want to encourage. So kudos to Gildersleeve School for being on top of things and getting their stuff together. At the same time, you know, I do hope that other people take advantage of this. We've talked about what a great opportunity we have, what a great resource we have here with this grant fund. And so I'm pleased that we have a talk of the musical at the third and fourth grade level. And I'm excited about whenever they have the opportunity for an author to come and visit and to bring things to life for these kids. So I think it's great. Any other comments, feedback? All those in favor? It's unanimous. And that is what we have under action items. We've not had committee meetings, although the good news is that we will have a policy committee meeting on November eighteenth. And so that brings, we'll waive the other ones. Did you kind of board us up any on Wednesday?
Not, no, not the most recent one. No, I did not. So I don't have, no.
Okay. Audience of citizens, would anyone like to address the board? All righty then. I need a motion to move into executive session and I would like to ask that we invite Dr. O'Reilly into executive session with us.
Some.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor of moving into executive session? Okay. So, thank you, everyone.
Just for the public's purpose, if any action is done, it will be done at the conclusion of executive session.
Correct.
Before adjournment, just so people understand.